If everyone can please settle, we're gonna get started with the second program in a minute here. Thank you. All right, I'm excited to introduce our next speaker Valerie Mendoza. Valerie is a public historian and folklorist whose research focuses on Latinx communities in Kansas and beyond. She serves as a host of the Big Idea sponsored by Humanities Kansas and is co-owner of The Other Roads Consulting, Inc. She received her PhD in history from the University of California, Berkeley. Welcome Valerie.
Good morning, thank you so much for having me. Donna Rae and I know each other and we do research together, but we've never done these presentations back to back. So it's gonna be really interesting to see the contrasts between these talks or the commonalities. So when you think of segregation, as we just heard, this is mostly what we think of, right? We think of it in black and white. Water fountains, separate bathrooms, separate entrances to buildings, sitting at the back of the bus. But segregation affects us who are brown as well. The sign's not from Kansas, it's from Texas. And rather than talk to you about cases and case law, because I'm not a legal historian, I will give you some case names for you to look up. I'm gonna talk to you about the circumstances that led to cases and community action, what it was like on the ground for everyday folks. And I'm gonna bring in as many Minnesota examples as I can. So as I mentioned, the sign is a sign that was up in public spaces in Texas. But my grandparents would tell me stories about having to take carryout from the back door of eating establishments. They'd have to go to the kitchen. And because they weren't allowed in the main dining area, right? Or I would hear stories similar to what Donna Rae said. You know, you could only swim in the public pools in the city the day before the water was going to be changed, right? You'd have to sit in balconies at movie theaters. There's a story my mom told me recently about my grandfather, who was Robert Gomez. He was born in Topeka, but his parents were immigrants from Mexico. And this probably happened 1930s, maybe in 1940s. He was very light complected, had gray eyes. And he walked into a restaurant where he knew he was not welcome. And he ordered food, he spoke perfect English, right? He's, like I said, born in Topeka, which is also where I'm from. Ordered his food, they gave it to him. As soon as he had the food in his hand and had paid, he starts speaking to the staff in rapid-fire Spanish so that they would know that they'd made a mistake. And they'd actually served a Mexican when they weren't supposed to. And they ran out of the restaurant as fast as he could before, you know, any action could be taken. So one of the things in larger cities in Kansas and in elsewhere across the country, particularly the southwest, there were separate schools for Mexican students. In Kansas, this happened in Topeka. And this happened in Kansas City, Kansas, which were two of the largest cities in Kansas at the time. This is Branner Elementary School in Topeka. And I don't have a photo of it, because I've never been able to find one. But right next to it was a school called Branner Annex. And that was a school solely for Mexican children. Now, as Donna Rae mentioned, the schools for black children in Topeka were equal to or better than the school for white children. That was not the case for Mexican students in Topeka or in Kansas or in general, in places throughout the southwest where there were separate schools for Mexican children. Those schools were markedly, markedly inferior. And I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit. So as we just heard, the most famous event to end segregation in schools and eventually in all public places nationwide was a lawsuit brought by several people in Topeka called Brown v. Board at All. The now famous ruling that separate schools were inherently unequal took place in 1954 and schools were asked to desegregate, quote unquote, with all deliberate speed. But the Brown case wasn't the beginning or the end of segregation, especially of those of us who were of Mexican descent. And here's a little timeline of some things, some, not all cases, but some of them that I want to highlight. And I'm gonna be talking about Saturnino Alvarado and his experience in 1925 in Kansas City, Kansas, in a little bit. But I also wanted to mention that in 1929 was the founding of the League of United Latin American Citizens in Corpus Christi, Texas. They were basically a civil rights organization, they still exist today. There were chapters, all and are, all over the country, including some founded here in Minneapolis in the 1950s. I'm not sure if they still exist today, but back in that time, there were active chapters. And one of the things that they did was to argue for equal opportunity, including the end of segregation. And they brought about a number of lawsuits throughout the country. In 1931, one of the earliest cases that we can point to against Mexican segregation occurred in Lemon Grove, California. And I'll give you the name of that case in a little bit. And then 1947 Mendez v. Westminster and then Brown in 1954. So the incident in Lemon Grove occurred, as you can see there, in 1931. And that case is Alvarez v. Board of Lemon Grove School District. And this was in San Diego County, where Mexican students were segregated into a separate school. And in that case, locally, the ruling was against segregation. So the schools had to integrate, but again, local, San Diego County. Mendez was 1947. And that was tried in the federal court. And the judge ruled that segregation inhibited students' ability to learn English and that, quote, "social equality was a paramount requisite to American education system," end quote. So that sounds a little familiar, right? So Thurgood Marshall and then NAACP filed an amicus brief in the Mendez case. And they followed it very closely and used some similar arguments for Brown. Like I said, I'm not gonna talk about those cases, but I'm gonna give you two more for you to look up. More recently, one is Plyer v. Doe, 1982, federal case. This was the case tried in Texas, where Texas tried to say, you know what? These students, these Mexican students, they're not citizens, so we don't have to educate them. Plyer was the case that said, yes, you do. And then I wanted to bring up one more case here in Minnesota, Cruz v. Guzman, 2017. That case is still up in y'all. Segregated schools here in, I think, Hennepin County, yeah? In this court district. So what I'm gonna do today is talk to you about school segregation and educational opportunities or lack thereof. And then I wanna talk to you about resistance to those segregations and cultural thriving. So here in Minnesota, early Mexican migrants came to this part and lived in the West Side Flats in St. Paul, which was originally a neighborhood of Jewish immigrants. Labor shortages in World War I saw Mexican immigrants settle in this area. And the big building in the back on your left is one of the schools in that neighborhood. There were also parochial schools, Donna Rae mentioned parochial schools. And Our Lady Guadalupe Church opened in that area on State Street in 1931. So according to Minnesotapedia, quote, "Most of the early Minnesotanos were migrant farmworkers from Mexico or Texas. They faced obstacles to first-class citizenship that were still being addressed. They overcame instability associated with migrant work by establishing stable communities in cities and towns across the state." Most of the migrant workers that came to Minnesota in the early 20th century worked as beat workers or "batas boleros" is what they were called. So I wanna talk to you a little bit about school segregation. And I couldn't find very many examples from Minnesota. And from the map Donna Rae said, it was outlawed here, so maybe that's why. But not in Kansas. So there were two cities in Kansas, as I mentioned, Topeka and Kansas City, which actually had a tri-racial school system of separate schools for Anglos, African-Americans, and Mexican children at the elementary level. This is one of those schools. This is the Clara Barton School in Kansas City, Kansas. It opened in 1923. And it opened because Anglo parents objected to their children mixing with Mexican children, right? So in 1922 in Kansas City, Kansas, Anglo parents petitioned for a separate elementary school. And they got it, they got this Barton School. In 1923, saw another three-room annex. So sometimes they weren't separate schools, sometimes they were like these little annexes. I mentioned with the Branner School Annex on the same grounds, but in a different building. And then in 1924, there was yet another, a third school in a different Kansas City, Kansas neighborhood. Typically, if these were other separate schools, there was no playground equipment. You know, there was no indoor plumbing. If it was an annex, there were literal lines drawn in the dirt on the playgrounds and you could not cross during recess. White children on one side, Mexican children on the other side. Reasons used for this were lack of English skills. You know, I don't want my kid going to school with a kid that doesn't speak English, it's gonna hold my kid back, right? These Mexican children, they need to learn how to be Americans. That's why they need separate schools. Lots of times, though, these separate schools did not meet health department requirements. So this school, the Clara Barton School, as I mentioned, was opened in 1923. By 1939, it didn't meet health department requirements because there were outdoor toilets. There were eight grades with only five teachers, including the principal. Students were spanked if they spoke Spanish. Their hands would be hit with a ruler or, you know, literal spanking. Names were changed in schools. And by the way, I haven't said this, I should've said this. None of these teachers in these separate schools where students supposedly didn't know English and spoke only Spanish, none of the teachers spoke Spanish. That wasn't a thing. So as part of this Americanization and because they couldn't say, you know, names in Spanish, teachers would just willy-nilly change students' names. So my grandmother, her name was Jesusa, and her teacher changed it to Hazel, right? Alejandro became Alex, Maria, Mary, those kinds of things. And it was not unusual for students to be singled out for harassment by teachers, especially as the grades got older. In other places, as I mentioned, Mexican students might attend Catholic schools. This also happened in Topeka where I'm from, again, other places in the southwest. Those schools, though, rather than being integrated, the way Donna Rae mentioned, they tended to be Mexican students only. So my father attended Our Lady of Guadalupe School in Topeka. And that school was all Mexican children, so it was de facto segregation. But again, in the contrast to the black schools that had black teachers, even these, you know, segregated religious schools were white nuns who did not speak English. In certain cities, students were not encouraged to attend public schools at all. They weren't told that they could go to school. That wasn't, they weren't encouraged. Oh, and I wanted to mention, with this school, I forgot to say, so 1923 petition starts in 1922. There's some speculation that one of the reasons for this, so back then, immigrants, particularly those coming from Mexico, were considered dirty, right? They were bringing disease. So if you think back to the early 1920s, around 1920, 1919, we were just experiencing the Spanish flu, right? So that was another reason about, you know, wanting these dirty immigrants away from our kids. If there weren't separate schools, then oftentimes, Mexican students would be placed in separate rooms or they'd be placed in the basement, right? And again, all grades, it wasn't like third graders get a separate room or second graders are gonna be in the basement. It's like all the grades are in that room or in that basement with the single teacher who does not speak Spanish. The other thing I'll say is that students were never tested to see if they could speak English, right? They just were, they saw how the student looked, they, you know, brown skin. They saw how the parents looked. They looked at the last name and just automatically put students into these separate schools. In Minnesota, children of beat workers, well, they may or may not, like I said, I couldn't find any information, they could've been put in separate schools. But one of the things that was unique about education for Mexican students in Minnesota at that time, because they were migrant farmworkers, right? They often had to leave school before the school year ended or they came in after the school year started. So this would lead to children falling behind, right? So in 1958, in Minnesota, the average age of Mexican first grader was eight years old, when normally a first grader is six years old, right? And by fourth grade, it was 12 years old instead of, you know, nine years old, 10 years old. And I wanted to give you this example really quickly of Dodge City, Wild West fame, right? Two examples, in Dodge City, to go to public school, you had to have your hair a certain length, right? Otherwise, you would not be allowed in school. Well, no white barber would cut the hair of Mexican children the right length so that they could be in school. So a Mexican man in a Mexican neighborhood known as Mexican Village took it upon himself to start giving children haircuts so they could go to school. Well, he was arrested because he didn't have a license to do that. Luckily, he had a somewhat sympathetic judge who said, you know what? You white barbers, you can discriminate, you have to cut the hair of these children. So there was a town, Mexican village, or a neighborhood, Mexican village in Dodge City. And most of the children would attend that separate school that was located in that area. It was funded by private money, which was one of the ways that they could get around having that separate school in this town. It was called the Coronado School and it opened in 1915 and it stayed open until 1947. And it was, this neighborhood was right near the Santa Fe Railroad, which was the job that most of the Mexican workers in that neighborhood worked at. Santa Fe donated the land and helped in part to fund the school and they needed the land back in 1947. So this school had, the Coronado School in Dodge City, had two rooms. One teacher for grades one through three, okay? It was built in 1915. Eight years later, in 1923, there were students from the University of Kansas and a professor touring all sorts of different schools around the state. And they came to the school and they were like, they thought it had to be a temporary school because it was just so dilapidated, like, you know, eight years after it was built and one that was used, you know, for nearly two decades later. They said, quote, "It's wholly impossible, such facilities, to provide satisfactory elementary instruction," end quote. Once schools were integrated, you know, somebody asked the question, well, what was it like after schools were finally integrated? You know, after the school was torn down in 1947? In this particular town, students were put into the special education classrooms. It was assumed, A, that they couldn't speak English. And B, because they couldn't speak English, they must have some sort of mental deficiency. So their curriculum in these schools, which also says a lot about special education at this time, was crayons, scissors, and a pad of paper. And that's all they would do all day long. Well, there was a Mexican student who was in this special education classroom and he got punished one day for some infraction, maybe speaking Spanish, I'm not sure. So his punishment was to sweep the hallways after school. So he was doing this and the principal happened to walk by and start up a conversation with this particular student. You know, maybe it was, oh, what happened? Why are you in detention kind of thing, I'm not sure. But the principal noticed that this child spoke Berkvik English. And he was like, why are you in this special education classroom? So the principal actually pulled the child out, put him in the grade that he was required, you know, grade level that he should have been in. The student went on to, you know, finished elementary school, went on to high school and graduated. That was just one instance of a student who kind of made it out of this very unequal, unequal school system. Okay, so these are the kinds of things that were going on, right? In Kansas specifically, but also across the country mainly in the southwest. Now, I wanna talk to you about agency and resistance and how these things were not accepted. So in 1925, two decades before the Brown decision, there was an incident involving four Mexican students who were forced out of Argentine High School in Kansas City, Kansas, because they were Mexican. These four students all graduated from the Clara Barton High School, elementary school, right? They spoke perfect English. And they enrolled in Argentine High in the fall of 1925. Jesús and Luz Alvarado, Marcos de León, and Victorina Perez. While Anglo parents objected to their presence, okay? So you have to remember back in this time, not a lot of people, black, white, Mexican, were going on to high school, right? It was a very privileged thing. Lots of times, students had to work, you know, to support, help support the family income or, you know, they had to stay home to help parents around the house. So that's why there were only four students. So Anglo parents, again, said, hey, petition worked last time, we're gonna do another petition. We don't want these brown kids in our school with our students. Well, they couldn't use language of deficiency as an excuse. They couldn't use Americanization as an excuse with these particular four children because they had graduated from the Americanization Language School Clara Barton, right? So these parents got this petition, several hundred signatures, sent it to the school board. And they said, we want these children removed from the school. So the school board said, no, I'm sorry, right? They have to be in the school, we're not building a whole separate school for four kids. They're gonna go to the school. But the school board said, you know what, we'll put them in a separate room and give them their own teacher, that way you guys don't have to mix. The Mexican parents, to their credit, refused this offer. They said, no, we want our children to have the same education that all the other students are having. So the school board said, okay, okay, if that's what you want, here's what we'll do instead. We will pay tuition and car fare and for your students to attend a school across state lines in Missouri. And then they can get the same education those students in that school are having, right? So you can imagine the creativity and the real, like, you know, they did not want these kids in this school. Again, Mexican parents refused the offer. So this led to a threat of violence against the Mexican students. And what happened was the Mexican parents withdrew their students from school. They kept them out of school for an entire year and lodged a complaint with the Mexican consul who had an office in Kansas City at that time. In October, the state attorney general is involved now, right? So there are all these newspaper articles, it's just how we know about this, and they hear about it. And the state attorney general talks to the Wyandotte County attorney saying, you know what? You need to work this out, this is making the governor look bad. We want, quote, "the rights of friendly aliens protected" and to correct the condition that exists in Wyandotte County, end quote. So by now, things are going back and forth, right? So the state attorney general is saying, you know what, this is a county issue, take care of it. The county is saying, no, this is a school, you know, a local school board issue, they need to resolve the issue. So, and the Mexican parents are complaining to the Mexican consul, who then contacts the Mexican embassy in Washington DC, right? The Mexican embassy took the stand that school segregation violated treaties between the United States and Mexico. And the Mexican consul general argued that the school board should pay for police protection to these students. So the buck is being passed all around. It's quickly becoming an international incident, right? Between the United States and Mexico. Finally, the United States State Department in Washington DC says that these children should be allowed to attend Argentine High because the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo from 1848, which ended the US-Mexican War, says that Mexican citizens are white. So these children need to go to this high school. The following fall, three of the four children enrolled back in school, right? Nothing happened. There were no stories in the newspaper, no incidents, they just, they enrolled. And one of the reasons we know this was that one of the students And one of the reasons we know this was that one of the students, Marcos de Leon, was in the starting lineup of the football team in October. Three years later, I mean, four years later, in 1930, all four of them, all three of them graduated. Not really sure why the incident blew over. Maybe De Leon was a really good football player and they kind of overlooked it. I don't know. There is a, a coda to this, this story. I haven't been able to verify it, but I really like telling it because it's such a good story. So Marcos de Leon, the football player, went on to Baker University, which is south of Kansas City, and played football there. And the urban legend goes that he taught his team the plays in Spanish so that the opposing teams would not know the plays that they were calling. So I don't know about that. But I like the story. So while I couldn't find many stories about Minnesota schools and segregation and discrimination, I did find tons of information to share with you about resilience in, in Minnesota. So in 1939, St. Paul witnessed the first of many fiestas patrias, holidays that celebrated Mexican independence. These celebrations included a parade that traveled from west side to downtown and back. Its route passed through Harriet Island. There were musical performances, dances, traditional foods, all prepared by this local group called the Guadalupanas. And one of the reasons I, I share that with you is these, these Mexican immigrants taking and claiming public space in the city streets, right? And that's, that's probably not seen very often, right? Even today. So I think 1939, that's really important. In the 1950s, two national organizations began chapters in Minnesota. As I mentioned, the League of United Latin American Citizens and the American GI Forum, which was an organization, again, started in Texas after World War II for Mexican veterans because they were being discriminated against and they felt that was wrong. They had served their country. So the GI Forum, quote, "Both organizations fight for the rights of Mexican Americans." Now, going back to education, Sister Mary Giovanni Goran, a west side St. Paul native, active in Our Lady of Guadalupe Church, resolved to help her community specifically through education. And in 1966, at the very beginnings of what became known as the Chicano Movement, she came up with the idea of the Guadalupe Area Plan, also known as GAP, G A P. GAP was designed to fill the opportunity gap between Latino people, those of Mexican descent, and other groups through alternative education classes. So there must be some disconnect going on in the public schools at this time, probably prior, you know, with Mexican students, that there is this education gap and she wants to fill it. The program admitted 14 to 19-year-old students on probation and parole, as well as those having difficulties in schools. So my dad tells the story of himself in high school. He went to, to Pika High and he wanted to go to college. He's the son of immigrants born in Kansas, but son of immigrants. And he wanted to go to college. And this is the early 1960s. But he was being tracked into vocational education because it was assumed that Mexican students, that was where they should go, right? They weren't college material. They, they needed to earn a trade. So after they graduated from high school, they could get, get a job, right? And that's fine. That was your aspiration, but that was not my dad's aspiration. He was not being enrolled in algebra, chemistry, physics, and that's what he wanted to do. And he did not have, his parents did not speak English. So he did not have parents who could call up the principal, like I did for my kid, right, and say, hey, this is going on, fix it. He had to do that all for himself. And he did. And he did take chemistry and physics, you know, algebra and on all that. He went to college and he ended up graduating with a degree in physics. And he ended working, one of his early jobs was working for NASA in the late 1960s, right? So that's a story of individual resilience, right? So back to GAP. GAP also gave general school courses that integrated Mexican history, culture, tradition, right? That's what these students want. That's what stimulated their learning experience, creating this immersive experience to inspire pride in these students. Brown Berets, which you see here, were kind of the equivalent or very similar to the Black Panthers, right? And this is, I can't remember if this is Minneapolis or St. Paul, but Twin Cities, right? Marching, again, claiming public space, public streets. You can see they have an American flag, a Mexican flag, and I'm not sure what the third flag is that's, that's closest to us. The Brown Berets created to work, worked to create safe and drug-free streets on the west side. It was a grassroots organization that led to the opening of La Clinica, a community health clinic for those who have difficulty assessing traditional healthcare. In 1969, artists painted murals all over the streets of St. Paul and alleys that beautified the Latino neighborhoods. And in their creation and the stories they told, they reinforced pride and insisted on inclusion, right? Chicano activists, activism led to the creation of Aztec and folkloric dance troupes, Latino theater companies. They used art to, to celebrate and share stories. Brown Berets had 55 members at the peak of their group's existence in the early 1970s, and the members ranged from 12 years to 27 years old. From 1969 to 1973, they helped organize youth cultural and, youth-oriented and cultural events, including an arts and crafts festival, an annual Christmas party at the neighborhood house. And they encouraged education, job skill development. They organized tutoring programs, youth programs. In 1970, the Latin Liberation Front was a student group at the University of Minnesota. They came together with community leaders and hosted a Midwest Chicano Conference. The three-day conference brought together 180 participants from across the nation and provided a platform for organizers to share strategies on how to overcome discrimination. At the conference, the communities planned to start a Chicano Studies Department at the University of Minnesota Blossom. And this is the first newsletter from the Centro Cultural Chicano, or uses Aztec iconography there. 19, October 26, 1971, 20 students led by Romana, Ramona Rosales, the president of the Latin Liberation Front, took over Memorial Hall, demanding that university agree to build a Chicano Studies Department. And within 72 hours, she had high demands. Otherwise, she said the group was, would call for a strike. Whatever she did, and again, woman leader, right, it worked because of October 20, by 1972, that fall, the first classes in Chicano Studies were held. In 2012, the department changed its name to the Department of Chicano and Latino Studies to reflect the influx of students from South and Central America. So these are just some of the ways, right, that Chicano, Latino people helped fight for equality, overcome discrimination that I wanted to share with you today. So that's it. Thank you.
This is actually a question for both you Valerie and for Donna Rae. One thing that really stands out to me in the presentations you both gave was sort of the impact of the organizations that people belong to, right? Both, you know, like the women of Brown and when you were reading their bios, that they each belonged to a group, a society, you know, a focus. And then Valerie, you also talked about how there were these groups that were, I mean, including this one right here in like Minneapolis, St. Paul, and the Brown Berets and things like that. And I'm just curious, like, have those groups sustained? And if not, why do you think they went away? And what sort of is the impact of that now?
Yeah, for me, these types of groups were definitely reflective of that kind of civil rights era timeframe, you know, during the, like I said, it was called the Chicano Movement. Some of these organizations, I think, are still around in, in the Twin City area. I'm not sure exactly about this one. So I think decline, like my dad, my parents were huge in, in the Chicano Movement. They helped start a senior center. They helped start an educational center, you know. They formed a chapter of LULAC. And the senior center and the educational center are still around today, fifty years later. My parents aren't as involved in those organizations. And actually, the LULAC chapter in particular is kind of dying out. And I think it's because there's not those new, younger generations coming up. They might not even know about it. I think part of it is not knowing our history, not knowing the women of Brown, right?
That's a good question. I think my response is that they were created at a time of need. So remember I said those, they were operating as separate communities? So the National Association of Color Women's Club is a mirror organization to the White Women's Club, right? The national organization of that. So one of the things we really don't think about in terms, when we're talking about integration, is what happened to those organizations that were created because there was segregation? And, you know, I always say, I want to be able to go where I want to go, when I want to go, how I want to go there. But, and so that means I want to integrate its society. But there is still also, I still crave, I still miss that community, that sense of community. My, my children grew up in Topeka in rural Kansas. I am actually from Wichita, Kansas, and I was born and raised in a very strong black community. One of my daughters, at one point, she was probably about 12 or 13, she didn't realize there were white people in Wichita. So because we were so insular in our comings and goings, and Wichita is still a very segregated city in that regard, obviously. So I, I think it was because, you know, people hate it when I blame integration for the downfall of community. But really, when you think about it, being able to go where you want to go, when you want to go, live where you want to live, that has a, a consequence, right? So.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Valerie. This was really informative. You know, my, my dad was, well, my dad's Mexican and he, his family immigrated from Mexico in 1916. They fled the Mexican Revolution. At the time, he was the youngest of 13. He was born in Minnesota, followed the sugar beet. So the, the story that you're telling resonates with me specifically because it's what I hear over and over again, right? My daddy's 89 right now. But the one thing, there's a couple of things I wanted to point out. The first is, while there wasn't formal segregation, the reason why Our Lady of Guadalupe was actually founded was because the Catholic Church and the Catholic schools did not want the Mexicans at their churches. So I think St. Matthews and St. Joe's at the time were at the, in the west side and they were predominantly, I want to say, German-American. And so they were looking to, you know, have a place for the Mexican Catholics on the west side of St. Paul to, to congregate and to worship. But they didn't want them as part of their school system and of part of their parish. The other thing is GAP was, so my dad ended up graduating from high school, from Humboldt High School in 1956. And he ended up serving the St. Paul Public School system for a number of years as a social worker. And GAP was always controversial too because the intention was to bridge the gap, as you spoke about, with respect to the education that was lacking for the Mexican community. But it also was not intended to create its own educational system. So it was interesting to see that from like my dad's perspective as a social worker, supporting the public schools of St. Paul, try and navigate that during that time and make sure that there was integration with those students within the public school, but that they got the support that they needed in a supplemental way through that. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for those comments. Yeah, those are very important. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Valerie, for illuminating the treatment of Mexican children in our school systems and for highlighting, highlighting the resilience of the Mexican families and students who are facing this unfair treatment. It's like we mentioned earlier, is that sometimes these narratives are lost in history. So it's important to highlight them here. We had a scheduled break. We're gonna go right into our third program. We're gonna throw up the slides. It'll just be a second. So our last program will explore the current state of education equity in Minnesota. We'll be joined by Anusha Nath from the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis and Lillian Igebe, Lead Attorney with the Southern Minnesota Regional Legal Services Education Law Advocacy Project. Anusha joined the Federal Reserve Bank as an economist in 2016. She has taught at Boston University, Delle University, and the University of Minnesota. Lillian is, has headed the Education Law Advocacy Project, ELAP, for, since its inception in 1995. ELAP began as an innovative pilot project to enforce the educational rights of and improve the educational outcomes for low-income and minority students and families who face many systemic barriers. So we're gonna start off with Anusha. Welcome.
Thank you, Lillian, for the introduction. So disclaimer, what I'm gonna talk about today are my views and not necessarily views of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis or the Federal Reserve system. I was also, I'm thankful for Kenneth Huang, who's here today, and Julia, for excellent research assistance on this project. So today, what I'll talk about are two main things. So the topic is education disparities in Minnesota and what it looks like today. And I'll begin with broad topics in which I'll just show you what the patterns look like broadly in Minnesota, across different demographics, schools, and so on. And this builds on previous work that I've done with Rob Grunwald and a report that came out in 2019. And then I'll talk about a little bit more on why do these disparities exist? What are the factors that are driving it? And for that, I'll deep dive into a particular school district whom we're working with to actually answer this question and look at student-level data and see what can we find and what, what patterns do we see there? Can we say anything about causality? Can we, can we identify factors? And what are the challenges in doing that? So let me start with the broad patterns. This first graph basically is looking at grade four, reading scores by race across time. So, so these are just test scores that students get in grade four. The blue line is, are the white students. And then you have all these other lines, the green one being African-American, Hispanic, and American Indian. And what you can see is that there's a big gap between the white students and some of the minority students. I don't have Asians here. Asians are I don't have Asians here. Asians are doing as well as white students, so just to kind of give that benchmark. The other thing to notice is that these gaps are persistent, right? So we have data starting two thousand two and all the way up to twenty twenty-two. And we see there really not much has been changing, although Minnesota has been doing a lot in trying to address these disparities with various policies. Now, what are these gaps coming from? Is it white students are much better off, or African-American students or black students are doing worse? So here, what I'm showing you are comparisons with US averages. So where is Minnesota compared to all the other states? So the dashlines now are the US averages in reading in grade four for students. And this comes from the NCES made data. And you can see the white students in Minnesota on an average do as well as students across the country. But what's happening is that African-American students are lagging behind. Their average, or our Minnesota averages are below the US averages. So when you really rank, you know, the states across the US, Minnesota is actually at the bottom. We're forty-ninth or the fiftieth, depending on which year you look at. And that's coming from our African-American students not performing well. Similarly, graduation rates. Graduation rates do show a little bit, you know, increase over time for all students, even for white students. So in two thousand three, you had about eighty percent students, white students graduating, and minority students were less than forty percent graduating. But when you force forward two thousand twenty-three, it's about ninety percent for white students. So there's a ten percentage point increase for them as well. But also, you see a catch-up for some of the groups, specifically Hispanic and African-American. But our native students are not being able to catch up all that much. So we still see group differences across time. Now, test scores are large, but the gaps are large, graduation rates are declining. What about college readiness? So we have data for some of the years till twenty eighteen in college readiness. So this is described by, or the way we measure it is by looking ACT test scores that students gave when they're applying to colleges. And there's a threshold beyond which you're deemed ready for college. And then what we find, again, are white students are more ready for college, but slightly declining over time for all groups, partly, partly reflected by how things are measured, but the gap between different groups remains large and persistent. Now, graduation rates are going up, but students are not as ready for college. So that kind of gives you a dichotomy and shows that, you know, there's something going on where we're graduating students, but they're not ready. So I also looked at data from Minnesota's Office of Higher Education, where they look at students who are entering colleges in Minnesota, whether it's four-year, two-year, and so on, and look at how many students are taking remedial courses or development courses before they actually start taking the main courses in their college. And about forty percent of African-American students do though. And only about ten to thirteen percent, depending on which year you look at, are for white students. So we're graduating them, but they're not ready. So what can we see across schools? These are across, you know, averages across time. Let's look at differences across schools. So here, every dot is a school. And the Y-axis is the average in that school for grade four reading scores. And on the X-axis, I'm presenting in that school, what proportion of student population is a minority, right? So this is share of student population that is minority. And as you can see, schools which have a higher proportion of minority students have lower average test scores. There's differences. So if you just look at like fifty, there are some schools who do better than, you know, schools with the same, similar composition of students. But this negatively sloping line tells you schools with larger minority population have lower test scores. Now, is there a difference between charter schools or traditional schools in this pattern? Not really. So if you really, so here we're plotting something different, which is kind of like the scatter plot, but we've binned it into ten, ten different categories. And as you can see, this gray line versus this yellow line, which is about seventy to eighty percent population minority, only ten percent minority, whether you look at public schools or charter schools, it's a declining line. If anything, in the beginning, the charter schools are somewhat doing better on average. But this fact that any school, traditional or charter, largest student of minority, they have lower test scores. This is just a correlation. Urban versus rural, we still see some differences. Here, I've plotted test scores and how many schools there are, how many students that score at that level. And you can see that there's a shifted sort of graph. These two lines are average, showing that schools in rural areas on an average do better than schools in urban areas. And it's mostly coming from this part of the distribution. Okay, so there is some rural-urban divide, but not so much charter versus traditional. Now, same thing for graduation rates. You have schools which have, these are high schools, so there are fewer dots. High schools with higher minority population, you have lower graduation rates. So there's, although through time, we see this persistence, just within a particular year, across schools, we see a bigger difference. Now, these are sort of outcomes. Well, what do we see in these schools as inputs? What's happening in these schools? Are there different sources of funding? Maybe schools which have higher minority have less funding. And if you plot per pupil expenditure, that's actually not true. So the government is doing more to put more money in those schools. So we actually see more per pupil expenditure in those schools. Is it class sizes are different? Not really. Class sizes look very similar. There's a lot of variation. Some schools have more, like a smaller class, more teachers per student, some have less. But if you look at average across different schools with different minority population, it's flat. So it's not true that schools with more minority population have fewer teachers. That's not true. Teacher per student. What we do see is experience of teachers. Okay, so schools which have higher minority population students, see, have teachers who have lower tenure. So they've been there on an average about six or seven years. And in schools which have very low minority population, the average teachers stay there for fourteen years. Okay, so what could be happening is that the schools have a higher turnover of teachers who've just come out of their own schooling, right? So they're not experienced, and so that might be one of the reasons why you see this disruption in these schools that could be leading to this outcomes. Now, this is just a correlation, so you can't put a causal statement to it, but it points to looking at this as an aspect for why things could be different. Okay, so what I've shown you are some patterns where, you know, we've seen that, you know, class sizes look similar across schools. We see similar funding or, you know, funding is more equalized. That was one of the big issues after Brown v. Board. The biggest cases were fought about equalization across school, in, across districts within, within the same state. So what I want to look at is, well, across schools, we see this, but what about within schools? We also see that students who are of minority population do worse, even within the same school with the same set of resources. Now, why is that? So that's what I'll spend the rest of my talk on. So how do I do that? So we're working with, as I mentioned, a diverse suburban school district in Minnesota, where we basically see student-level information. So we see in each grade, you know, which classes they're taking, which teachers they're with. For every course they take, what does a midterm exam look like? What does a final exam look like? So really get a sense of who the students are interacting with, who we're teaching them, and so on. And in today's presentation, what I'll do is look at students who entered the grade nine between two thousand five and twenty seventeen. So I'm going to focus on high school students for this presentation. And what I want to do is try and identify, can we see some outcomes for these students before they come to high school? Can that predict their high, high school performance? That gets us to being able to really understand what's going on in their lives and then see what their outcomes are. Just follow the students. And three high school factors we look at would be various outcomes, which I'll just mention in a minute. But these outcomes will average from grade one to grade nine. And then the idea being, once you reach grade ten, we already see these outcomes. So what happens in grade ten cannot affect what has happened before, right? So this, going from correlation towards causation, this is kind of one big issue. If you say, okay, students are not showing up to class, that's why they're not doing well. But maybe they're not doing well because they're not showing up to class, right? So you have to get rid of this reverse causality, and this is one step that gets towards that. There are other issues that might be sort of, you know, may not be very tight in terms of causal statements, but I'll mention that in a minute. Okay, so now what are these measurements that I'm talking about, that we look at before students enter high school? All these factors. So first are MCEs scores, which are Minnesota test scores that every student gives in grade four or five, grade eight, and grade eleven for reading, math, and science. So we take their test scores from grade four and grade eight. Mental health indicators. So in this data, we see every event of mental health incidents a student experiences from grade one to grade nine. So every time they were in class where they expressed to the teacher or they had to go to the clinic, that is recorded by the school district. So we see every anxiety, every episode of, you know, other mental health issues could be more extreme, could be less extreme, depression, societal thoughts, everything. Today, we're going to combine everything and just see how many incidences these students are facing. But anxiety is one of the biggest ones in here. Physical health indicators. So any physical health problems you faced, including common colds, if you had it for five days, and so on. But the most of them, we're going to capture this time, are more debilitating ones. Maybe you broke your leg and maybe six months you couldn't play and so on and so forth. So we're going to take, take account that that could affect your outcomes or test scores in previous years. We see our absences. So how many days you were absent? Not only how many days, but even within a day, did you skip some classes and then were you present for others and so on? We also have disciplinary incidents. So every time there was a behavioral issue, a disruption in class, or something more severe, which was violence towards other students or teachers, that's also recorded, and we're going to take that into account. We also know if there was a disciplinary action following the behavioral incident, and we're going to sort of control for those aspects. Then one of the facts that, you know, factors that we see affects outcomes or sort of outcomes are different across groups is whether a student is eligible for FRPL or not. And FRPL refers to free and reduced price lunch. Now, this, this measure basically is trying to capture income levels of parents. Because we know if you're from a rich neighborhood or from, you know, parents which have more resources, you might be able to do learning outside of classroom. So that could be a factor that explains outcomes. So we want to control for it and make sure that that's not what's driving the results. Similarly, special education status, whether you were in any classes with special education needs, we'll take that into account. And then we have cultural factors proxy by language spoken at home, which we observe in the data as well. So, you know, we look at Asian population, but Indian moms can be a little bit more pushy than maybe some other Asian moms. So we want to take that into account as well, when we want to look at what's driving these outcomes differently. Okay, so then all this data from grade one to grade nine, we all want to take it together. For every student, we observe everything all the way through. And then we say, okay, having observed this, how well do you perform in high school? Okay, and what are the factors? Can it explain differences in outcomes? So here, I'm going to show you the results from this regression. So basically, all these factors, the way to interpret it is, this is the zero line. So if this line is crossing zero and has sort of the open circle, that means it's not significantly different from zero. So we can say that factor does not affect the outcome. If it is further from zero and it has a solid circle, that means that factor is significantly different from zero and has an effect on the outcome. If it's on this side, it's a positive effect. If it's on this side, it's a negative effect. Okay, so that's how we would read this graph. So what does this tell us? This tells us that if students did, had a higher test score or MCE score before high school, they're more likely to do, have higher high school GPA. So they're performing better in class. Not surprisingly, if you've learned and you've documented that you've learned your stuff before coming to high school, you're more likely to perform better. Absences, tardiness, disciplinary incidents, all of these negatively impact high school GPA. Not surprisingly, these are disruptors to learning, and that might affect the outcome. FRPL is also a factor. Again, if you've seen some of this education data, you won't be surprised that students from disadvantaged backgrounds have a lower high school GPA. What's interesting is that mental health and physical health doesn't seem to have much effect in predicting GPA in high school. So if you've had anxiety episodes, but were able to overcome it some way, then that really doesn't affect your long-term outcome. So that was an interesting fact that we saw in the data. Special ed, if you have special ed classes, your GPA is lower. And then controlling for all these factors, what this is saying, Hispanic or black, if you look at it, is that a student who did, who had the same, a black student who had the same MCE scores before high school as a white student, who had similar absences, had similarly, similar disciplinary actions, is from a similar family background. Even then, he's getting a lower GPA than a white student. Okay, so there is, after controlling for all these things, you still see a difference in black-white students, in Hispanic-white students as well. And surprisingly, males do worse. I don't know, surprisingly, I think girls like do, put in a lot of effort and more diligent, so they do better. But the magnitude, how, how further away it is from zero was a surprise for us, okay? And then that was sort of one, what is affecting, you know, what is predicting high school GPA? And the other is how much? So all these factors are pretty close to zero compared to these. So there's something else going on that is leading to differences in black-white or white Hispanic student differences in outcomes, okay? Now, what is that? There could be many things. These are stuff that I already mentioned to you, so I'm just going to focus on the why, the various factors. Family background. So we see in the data that black students are more likely to be from a single-parent household. Now, that is also related to absenteeism, which we observe, but it could be related to a whole bunch of other things. So if it's a single parent, they can't take you to, you know, class in time, you're tardy, you're not catching up, and so on and so forth, and that could disrupt your learning. So that is one factor. Then there could be neighborhood factors. This is something that we haven't seen in our data yet, or plan to, but there are other studies which have shown that neighborhood or environmental exposures to trauma or other incidences in the neighborhood could lead to learning disruptions, and also that accumulates over time. Differences in experience within school. Valerie talked a lot about that student who was in detention, who was not supposed to be in special ed, but the principal found him and put him in the right class. Well, some students may have that, and some students just don't get discovered, right? So which classes you're in, who's your teacher, who you interact with, could affect your outcomes in the future. And that's something that's unobservable, but is correlated with race. Or it could be correlated with, you know, being from a disadvantaged background, because you just don't have those opportunities or interactions that others do. And that too, that is kind of, you know, not observable, so we're not able to control for that, but it's correlated with these other factors. So could be explaining it. And all other unobservable that you might think of could be driving those results. Now, let me give you one example of teachers. So in the same school, we've also sort of tried to measure teacher value added. How much does a teacher contribute to the outcome of a child? And there are ways to do it, and I can get, you know, into details of how we do this if somebody's interested. But here, what I'm plotting is teacher's contribution to students' improvement between midterm and final in the same classroom, in that term, amongst forty students, for example. Take the classroom, take all the students, some are white, some are black. Look at their midterm exams, see how whites and blacks are doing, black students are doing in the midterm. What are the differences in those groups? Look at what are the differences in those same groups, in the same class, in the finals? And has that difference gone down? Okay, so that's what this plot is showing. If it's positive, means the teacher has been able to, you know, bring the averages of these groups together. So black students are better off. Yeah, I say better off, it could be something different, but in the way I'm interpreting it, it's better off. And negative means that between midterm and finals, black students are lagging behind. And negative means that between midterm and finals, black students are lagging behind in the finals compared to the midterm. Okay, so that's how we're able to see how the teacher's contribution is uh through a statistical model. And as you can see, there's a huge variation. Some teachers here are really good in pulling up, uh, you know, reducing these differences, and some teachers are not. So depending on which classroom you end up in, if even if you're taking the same subject, you might have a very different experience, very different pedagogy. Okay, and that could be explaining some of the reasons why we see differences in black, white test scores. So that's just an illustration, but these are the type of factors that we're sort of, now we're actually able to observe and measure and not are, it's not something unobservable. So we're building on that. So just to kind of conclude, um, I showed you that there are disparities in outcomes and could be potentially driven by, if you look at across Minnesota, across very difference, across differences in schools in terms of quality or or uh, you know, how the resources are used. Uh, and within schools, it could be driven by absenteeism, behavioral incidences and mental health. It could also be coming from, as I showed, family and environmental backgrounds and differences in teachers and peers that students interact with. Now, well, if you ask me, what should you do about this? And I said, I don't know, these are all the factors that do seem to matter. The way to think about this is that, you know, as a policymaker, you might want to say, okay, this is something at a or a central level, you can uh think of it as a policy question, how do we think about this? But at the school level, there's a lot that can be done. Um, really understanding where, like using data to understand where these differences are coming from. Uh, if you look at just absenteeism, there are some groups which, for which it matters more, how it affects their outcomes and some less. So try to sort of think about how we can uh address those. For things like family and environmental factors, probably schools can't do too much, but there's community involvement that can help. Uh, and there's other, you know, understanding how to partner with schools with other organizations, especially in early childhood can help. I showed you high school, but if you do a similar analysis, you'll find similar things in early childhood even bigger. Um, and some of how do we think about these interaction experience and change that uh are something you can think about. Thank you. Happy to take questions.
I said a question, can you tell us a little bit more about like what Federal Reserve is doing around some of these issues in addition to this excellent research you presented?
Uh, sure. So, um, oh yeah, so the question is, what is the Federal Reserve doing uh around these issues? So, um, as you know, Federal Reserve has a dual mandate of stabilizing prices and also full employment. Um, so we think a lot about how do, you know, factors affect labor market outcomes? And one of the big factors are human capital and education. Um, so we think about that a lot uh in terms of research, in terms of uh other ways of figuring out how the economy is working through these channels. Um, and Federal Reserve has, um, I don't know if you know, uh, Rulnik, he's been the champion uh and looking into these issues and doing research, we sort of spearheaded a lot of thinking into early childhood. Uh, and so we, me and other people as well are doing independent research, uh, which is most to understand what's going on and let's sort of document patterns uh in there. So that's what we're doing.
You kind of touched on it a little bit in your research, but um I was wondering if redlining and urban renewal really played into the patterns that you see developing today, that historical kind of long view. Um, and again, you kind of touched on it, like the social determinants of health. Uh, have you looked at it through that lens at this point?
Uh, good question. So the first one is the red light, the question about redlining and uh I think also covenants actually existed in Minnesota uh before the Supreme Court judgment in some, some late forties, I think. So the way they would affect the outcomes today would be through how school district boundaries are defined. So as a neighborhood developed, redlining was done, that that also, you know, changed the nature of school districts. There are been, there have been changes in boundaries of school districts over time, but doesn't change drastically. So through the, and so those graphs that I showed you where you see these differences across schools, uh, for example, you know, take reading or whatever. Some of these schools, I would suspect, uh, you know, are an out- outcome of redlining or covenants and so on, because that's where people lived. The fact that in traditional public schools, there are a lot of higher minority population, that's where uh that goes through. And then through incomes of parents who moved in and through all these other neighborhood factors, it kind of persists. So that's, that's how I would think about those channels. Um, yeah.
So will there be more investments? Are you developing strategies to, I understand the school system is trying to equalize resources, but as a community, is there outside efforts to equalize resources through mortgages or homeownership or?
Yes, I think um there are, there are definitely a lot of work going on in those, all of those areas. Uh, the reason I know about the covenants is because there was a really nice University of Minnesota mapping project uh that has historical records of where each house actually was um covenanted and who was barred from moving into those houses. Not just people at that time, but also as part of the deed that you cannot sell it to someone else in the future and those kind of things. So definitely a lot of research, very interesting, you know, to Minnesota research going on there. Um, and also about uh mortgages, that's something the Fed thinks about all the time as well. Um, and so I think those are definitely things people are thinking about and uh what are the barriers? And how do we think and what are the solutions? So a lot of thought is going on. I cannot speak for their research, but the answer is yes. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Anusha. All right, I'm going to welcome Lillian up. Lillian's going to share a little bit more about Smurfs E-Lab and ways to get involved. So for all you attorneys, legal professionals in the room and online with us.
Hello, all. Yeah, it's just so disturbing to continue to hear about the persistent uh gaps in outcomes for, for the different groups of students. Um, well, I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be here and to talk about uh the education law advocacy project of Smurfs. Uh, we're a legal aid and we, we work where basically, this is where the rubber meets the road. Um, we've heard about the historical aspects of the uh racism. And we're still here, we still uh hear or know that we uh we have persistent uh um outcomes for the different groups of students. But I encourage everybody uh today not to be discouraged. Um, this is not a time to, to give up on our children. So my, my uh talk today is, I don't have any PowerPoint, is just the main takeaway is to let you all know of the available opportunity to get involved in the educational work that we do to through Smurfs. Our program is the only legal aid program in the state and actually, um, when this project started, even across the nation, where a legal aid program is really focused on addressing the educational needs of low-income and minority students. And our work is really focused on um implementing the laws and policies that are in place. As Anusha sort of um commented, um, there are many policies, you know, I mean, I've I've been doing this work for the past twenty-something years, almost thirty, and I've seen rounds of laws and policies put in place to address the needs, the educational needs of our, of our children. And what we do through E-LAB is to try to enforce these laws on behalf of our clients. One might wonder, what is a lawyer doing in the school system advocating for children? Uh, but wherever there are laws and there are many educational laws, it doesn't mean that those laws have been implemented the way it should be. So lawyers definitely should know this because that's why we are still in business, to make sure that people do the right thing as far as their laws are um are in place. So through E-LAB, um specifically the work that we do is, like I mentioned, we enforce the educational rights of the students in Minnesota. You have uh rights of English language learners, we have educational rights of homeless students, you have special education, uh, you have educational rights of uh youth in foster care, you know, you name it. And most recently in twenty twenty-three, I was really excited uh for um our legislators to to pass what is called the Read Act. And the Read Act, the goal of the Read Act is to have every child reading at grade level starting in kindergarten. That sounds, sounds fantastic to me. And so, um, this is a new law that was just implemented uh last year. Now, this law has been in place for about one year and with my experience doing that, this type of work, what I'm really um want to pay attention is the community or anybody that is involved or is interested, um, maybe we should focus on on being proactive to ensure that this law um really gives us the outcome that we're hoping that it, it will, because reading is really fundamental. We have seen the gaps in, in uh reading test scores. And if a child is able to read at grade level starting from kindergarten, most of our uh children are able to do that, then definitely um their educational performance in the middle school and in high school um is really going to be um better. So my ask, and you know, let me uh say it at this point is um, Smurfs has an opportunity for uh people to be involved in the work that we do. And um our work is really either focused on individual representation or trying to address uh the problems in a more systemic way. We represent low-income uh families. And so lawyers or whoever is interested, um, definitely will have the opportunity to um to be involved and to participate in doing what they can to address the educational problems that we have in Minnesota. And realizing that maybe individual representation might be difficult for, for some lawyers, because the individual representation means really, um, you know, talking with the families, um, attending um I E P meetings or school meetings, addressing some of these issues. Um, but if that does not work for um somebody, we are looking really at this new law, the Read Act. Uh, we're looking to forming some sort of uh team that will, you know, start maybe collecting data, we haven't figured out what the plan is, but to be proactive. Um, this law has been in place for about a year. And uh schools are still in the process of training teachers, uh but the law provides um adequate um testing of children uh to determine their reading levels. So this is already in place. And the law actually provides for intervention for students that are not uh at grade level. I don't know whether the schools, how the schools are doing this right now. And I personally, I don't want to wait for another twenty years to figure out, oh, maybe this didn't work after all, let's try something else. Because that's what I've been seeing over the years. If anybody wants to be engaged in that type of work, please uh feel free to contact me or contact Smurfs. Uh, I would love to, you know, get any help that we, we can get to advance uh this work. My, my, let me, tell me when my time is up because, you know, one minute. So, so rapid, uh, wrapping, you know, wrapping up, my role here is to let you all know, yes, there's still work to be done. We've come a long way. Yes, I, I have seen, you know, that we've come a long way, because when I started this work for doing special education, it was just like the wild, wild west. It does take a long time for laws that have been passed to really uh be, be fruitful. It's, it's really not an easy process. The policymakers and the legislators, they, they do have their work to do and they are doing good work. But we need those works to really translate into um improvement for our children. Thank you.
Still morning, so I'm going to say good morning. Um, I just have to say that I am leaving with a full brain, heart with all of the information, history and stories that we heard today. We learned about the powerful history of the women and people who changed the course of history. We also learned about the powerful generational impact that state policies and federal policies in cases have, right? Um, and I think that there, there is a lesson for us today, especially to think about what individuals, small groups of people and the impact that brave action can have. Especially at a time when communities of color continue to face challenges, especially as the research here in Minnesota indicates. And what this means, um, and the thing that I'm thinking about and what really filled my cup is that we heard about what African-American women did in Kansas, what um the Mexican-American folks in Kansas and here in Minnesota did at times of incredible adversity. And I think there's, there are lessons there that uplift me personally and tell me that there's more that I can do and that we can do collectively. Um, I would like to thank our speakers, Donna Rae, that, and Valerie and Lillian and Anusha. Thank you for your time, your wisdom and your knowledge and for taking the time to travel here, specific uh, especially to our friends from Kansas to come to Minnesota to share with us. I'd like to thank all of you for taking time out of your busy schedules. I know that um this type of learning takes intentional work, and so I thank all of you here in the room. We have over fifty folks who are also online who've joined us. I'd like to thank all of you out there in Zoom land. Um, and I'd like to thank our, our generous sponsors who really make this work possible. Um, Wild's mission is to end anti-black racism and all forms of racism here in Minnesota. Wild was started after the murder of George Floyd and it was a call to action by our board to do more. Uh, Twin Cities Diversity in Practice is a professional association of over seventy-five law firms and corporate legal departments, and we've been around for close to twenty years now. And our goal is to increase racial equity in um or to increase like racial like representation in the legal profession. We do this by attracting and retaining more attorneys of color here in the Twin Cities. And education is a really big part of our work. So I would encourage all of you to continue your like learning. Um, the Kansas Humanities Center has had some great resources online about the Brown New Board of Education Commemoration. I would ask you to, if you, I think our historians are going to stick around, you can come speak to them after the program, but also just continue the learning on your own. I would also encourage you to work in your, i- i- in our, in our own backyard. Smurfs and Lillian and her team are doing excellent work with their education law project. If you haven't heard about the Read Act, please take a look at that, uh, look at that as well. And finally, um, if you learned something today, if you feel inspired, uh, please uh consider making a donation to Wild. There's a Q R code on your screen and also at your tables, but we really rely on support from our legal community and from um individual supporters as well. So please consider making a donation. But thank you all for your time today. Thank you to our speakers as well and enjoy the rest of your day. But thank you all for your time today. Thank you to our speakers as well and enjoy the rest of your day.